Okay.
Testing one, two, checking for cats broadcast, checking test one, two. Check, check, test, test. Alright, testing one, two, testing cats audio for cool.
I didn't hear that part.
Pardon?
I don't know if they are or not. I mean, like, you know, I invited them, but yeah.
I think there's already a plan in the works. Yeah, I think things need to be resolved.
I am, I am, yes, I'm catching. There's a, there's a survey that you sent.
Yes, okay, but I have it ready, so.
Can you send it to my, like, bounty email, right?
A while back, sent that reversion.
Yes.
I just haven't asked them if they want me to present at all. I mean, I think it was self slated to me. I could just note for the record that I provided it maybe.
I think that's what I would do.
Okay.
And then that way.
If they want me to form a copy, do it. I just think.
Yeah. I think, I don't think you need to present it because I think you just kind of consolidated it, right? Because we had done so many.
That's right.
Yeah, so I don't.
And I just thought that category, that was okay, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. Order, order. It's Tuesday, April 25th, and I would like to note for the record that all council members are here, present in the NatU Hill Room. And with that, I will just go ahead and move.
It's okay to skip the roll call, right? We're all here.
All right. Spoke it for the record.
I spoke it into the record. We're here. We are going to move to the adoption of the agenda then. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda?
Did we already remove the item from the Commissioner's office? That's already been removed.
No.
Oh, it's not.
Item six, right?
Ah, item six? No?
So we need to. What's number six?
Right, we need to remove.
Okay.
Or actually, you need to table it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I move that we table item number six, Auditor Commissioner approval for a new account line for the American Rescue Plan Fund to the next council work session on May. Sorry, what was it? Twenty-third, two thousand, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Great, thank you for noticing that. We just need more information before we can make that decision, and I believe Jeff Cofferell is coordinating some information gathering to that effect. Are there any other comments or questions on that amendment? All right. Then, all in favor of amending the agenda to remove item six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion passes and agenda is amended. Any other? Items? No? Okay. Then we will move on to item number three, which is public comment, and we have a time limit of three minutes per speaker as usual. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to make comment on items not on our agenda this evening? I am not logged into Zoom, so.
Uh, there's no one on.
Okay. Great. Alrighty then, that was easy. Let's move to department updates, item four on the agenda. And we do have an update with from our Parks Department, I think. And Ms. Whitmer on Zoom.
I don't see her.
Just probably shocked that we're already getting to her item at five thirty-five. Are there any other departments who would like to make an update? Yes, it's Gregory.
I believe Auditor Smith and I both have an update tonight. I'll start if that's okay. I just want to note for the record that on April 5th, I forwarded the entire council, the incumbents and reversion reports. So if there are any questions on that, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. And yes, Ms. Smith.
No, turn it on.
Wow, I was like, I can hear you.
There you go.
How about that? Can you hear me?
That's better.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so good evening, and I would like to remind you guys and everyone that's listening that that property taxes are due. They're due May 10th for the spring installment. A lot of people who pay themselves, who don't pay inside a mortgage escrow, they pay, many of them pay it all in the spring. So I want to remind everybody that that's due Wednesday, May 10th, and you don't have another council meeting between now and then, so this is the appropriate time to mention that. And I also want to explain that the homestead exemption remains. However, the mortgage exemption is going away at the end of this year. So they're going to roll that inside the homestead exemption and increase the homestead exemption so that it does not hurt people who have mortgages and are paying in escrow. So I thought that would be important to tell the public that don't be surprised, this will be the last year you have a mortgage exemption. If you haven't paid your mortgage off or not intending to pay it off this year, you will not see that next year. What you'll see is differential in homestead exemption, and you can either call our office that puts the exemptions on, Kathy Smith, the auditor, or, and the treasurer sitting back there, Jessica McCollum, the treasurer. Either of us can answer questions, or our departments can answer questions regarding exemptions, if you would like that. You can, you can call, call us at any time, and we'll be happy to, to look at your tax bill and see if you have the exemptions that you really need, that you are really entitled to. Make sure that you have them all and, and go over your property if you have questions and what your tax rate is and how it's calculated. And I'd like to remind everyone that when we do do a referendum for schools, that's outside, that's outside the 1% homestead cap, and that that's a little different. So if that's confusing to you, please give me a call. I'll be happy to go over it, or you can come in and I'll sit down with you and do the math with it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's what Kelly's on now, by the way.
Great. Um.
Kelly Whitmer is now on.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
And we'll go ahead and hear from our Parks Department then.
Kelly, go ahead.
And she's a panelist.
She's not, Kelly, you're on mute. I'm not sure if. There you are.
For me. Okay, is it my turn? Because I've just having computer problems. Hello. Okay, all I'm doing here today is MCCSC is requesting that a small section of the Cars Farm Greenway be relocated in order to accommodate a track for the children in an area for the parents to pick up and drop off their children. They will pay for 100% of the new easement, to make the new easement, and also 100% of the relocation. We will, I will be bringing you a, an easement to read hopefully in the next few weeks. Do I have any questions?
Are there any questions from Ms. Whitmer? No, there are no questions for you. I think it's a, you know, a great way of showing a cooperation between entities. And I appreciate you being really flexible and working with MCCSC on this, because I think it'll really help out the school. I know the elementary school where my kids went had a lot of difficulty trying to navigate traffic for dropping off and picking up, so anything we can do to help, that, that's great. So when you get the easement information, if you could forward it to us and we will get you on the next agenda for anything that you need in terms of an approval.
Excellent, and this is Highland Park Elementary. Thank you so much. I'll be seeing you in the next thirty days, hopefully.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other departments for an update? Well, all right. Next is council liaison updates.
Were you gonna make a comment?
Yes, I will. I will make a council liaison update. But first, does anyone else have one? Ooh, two, two. I'm gonna start here and go, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to, to make a comment. The city election is nearly upon us, and that is a city election conducted by the county, and specifically, the clerk alerted me on April 16th that at that time, they still needed both Democratic and Republican poll workers to serve on the bipartisan teams that administer the election. So for the folks listening, when you go to a poll site, you're seeing a Democratic and Republican appointee administering that election locally, and that is a check on themselves, checks on each other, much like you have a bipartisan election board that administers the election in conjunction with the clerk. They need people that do that, okay, so that there's not just an army of people standing on standby. These are actually community members that administer that. If you're interested in doing that, contact Election Central. Their number is eight one two three four nine two six one two eight one two three four nine two six one two. And remember, if you have a willingness to help the election happen, the more people that have that willingness, the easier it goes, because Election Day operates from a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. If you thought about a business that opened once or twice a year from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on volunteers or folks that show up, they need your help. So please come out, Democrats, Republicans, concerned citizens, people that want to make democracy work once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates to my left? Yes?
Just to. Oh. Hello? Um. Houston is being really loud. Just as a, I'll use my mom voice. So I am the liaison for the Public Defender's Office, and I was hoping Ms. Heather Stappel was going to be on the call to give an apartment update. But since she isn't, and of course, she can always come back to council, we got word late last week that their system navigator grants was extended for another year. So I just wanted to give council notice and let everybody know that that is some good news, so. Yeah.
That's fantastic news. Thank you. Um. You will go to my right.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three quick updates for us today. The first is from the Environmental Commission. President Nolan Hendon has been doing a lot of work recently and will be appearing before the Monroe County Commissioners on May 3rd, which is a week from tomorrow, to have them approve the contract made between Monroe County and Indiana University's Environmental Resilience Institute. At the same time, we'll be welcoming Haider Attik, who will be our McKinney Climate Fellow. We're really excited for him to join us. So that's all going to be happening on May 3rd at the Commissioners, and then that'll come back to the council at our next meeting. So at that meeting, we'll get to meet Mr. Attik and also hear from Mr. Hendon about everything that's going on here.
Great.
All right. Number two is, we are really excited about what's happening in community justice in the community, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw that House Bill 1006 went to the Governor's Desk for signature. Very excited about the potential of that. Also really excited about the potential for Senate Bill One. So really encouraging folks to pay attention to those, those bills. My last update is from the Substance Use Disorder Advisory Commission. This Friday, we will be in the Monroe County Jail for a tour, talking with staff and inmates alike about issues relating to substance use disorder. We also have been highlighting the coroner data. That's, we talked about that at the last session here. The Commissioners are going to talk about it tomorrow, and we're working with our experts on GIS in the surveyor's office to create a dashboard, that then we can see updated data about substance use deaths in our community. So moving the ball forward on some interesting things, and hopefully that'll help us create not only fiscal policy, but policy out of the Commissioners' office that's related to local data.
Really great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Um, yes. As many of you know, I serve on the Indiana County Council Legislative Group through the state, and we've been meeting every Friday and going over legislation that's going through and and seeing what will work best for the counties. And when we were discussing House Bill 1006, by the way, that does receive the support of the group, but there's still the questions out there that's not covered having to do with financials and how it actually is going to work, having to do with transportation, how they're going to transport people back and forth, or, or just who will have the responsibility for that. And, and I've shared with you before my concern that in the fiscal, they're coming back to say it might affect county government having to do with the insurance for county employees. Now, I haven't checked out how that might affect us. I'm just saying that was in part of the fiscals. So while I think that there's a lot of things still to be worked out, and that will have to happen as we go along, probably haven't, people haven't really thought about what's going to happen once they transport people here, and they only have so many days to either release them or do something else. Well, then, do they, are they released here, or is someone supposed to pick them up, or how does that work out? And transport is an expensive proposition, and it also takes our people off of their normal procedures, and it also gives me the questions along with that, when we're going through and we're looking at our jail bookings, and we see that we have in the, in the jail pop sheet, so many that is being held for Department of Corrections, some of which have been held for quite some time. And so that's something else, that those dollars that should be coming in having to do with the care of, of folks, that should be in a separate fund, and we'll, I've talked with the auditor about that to see how, if we're keeping track of that. But also, why is it that we are still covering so many spaces for Department of Corrections, and how much of this is tied to the fact that we have the parole office right here, the state parole office right here in Monroe County? They cover several counties, so does that mean that all those counties are coming back to our county? So when people are looking at jail issues and so forth, I hope you'll also take that into consideration and how how we might make sure that we're using our dollars best to provide services that it appears we're going to be required to do.
Thank you. Um. I mean, all right, I do have, oh, go ahead.
I didn't want to.
Pull that closer.
I didn't want to interrupt Counselor Hawke, because I thought she might be covering this, but the legislature is still dealing with House Bill 1499 regarding food and beverage tax advisory commissions. And it appears that there's still a requirement that some funds be expended by a certain date. And that means that a future CIV, Capital Improvement Board, would need to make decisions about doing that. And my thoughts on this is that a good financial investment would be to have financial advice about bonding and the financing of the expansion project. And that certainly would be well-step money for the public's interest. And I don't see that this requirement by the legislature is going to hamper our expansion project.
But I understand, of course. When you're looking at that bill, Senator Gaskell did make the adjustments that I had asked for, saying, make it clear, clarify what you mean by spending the money. Do you mean spend it all?
Yeah.
Or, and I said, but I assume it's according to a plan, and that's what they amended it for, that it would be according to whatever plan. The city will put together their own plan, and they do not have to get the permission from the Tax Advisory Commission.
Right.
And the county puts together their own plan. And then they have to spend according to the plan, and they have until 2025 to, to do that, or the tax will go away, and then the county would disperse whatever dollars were left of the dispersment part. I ask also clarification on that. I don't have the clarification back. There's a lot of other things in this bill that I know that we are interested in that small part that ties to us, but there's a lot of other major things in that bill, some of which we would really love to see go through. But there's still negotiations. That bill's not dead. That's still being, but they have to hurry because Saturday, is it Saturday at noon, Saturday at midnight? It's definitely over. But we expect it to happen sooner. We really think it'll be sometime on Friday. So if we don't see some movement pretty quick, it would seem to me will that might just go away, or they might take out a portion and move it someplace else. We never know. They're making sausage. So.
And meatballs.
But it does not mean that we have to do something immediately, because as long as we each have a spending plan and we spend it according to the plan, then the tax continues to be collected. And then if people can get their heads together and do something else, fine, and if they can't, then they can't.
Certainly should make us think about our next steps. Any other council comment? Okay, I have a update that I'd like to share on behalf of our own body. And as the fiscal body, the county council has a significant role to play in the community justice reform that is occurring in our community. The members of this council take this role very seriously, and we are aware of the toll that the failures of our current system and facilities are taking on many of our residents. Soon, we will be asked to finance a new jail facility and expanded treatment options for individuals suffering from mental health and substance use crises. We want to make these decisions thoughtfully. We want to be informed, and we have a thorough understanding of the financial implications of these decisions. At the same time, we cannot drag our feet on these issues. Every day, people we know and love are suffering, running out of time and options in a community that can and will do better. Therefore, council will consider, as soon as our next meeting, establishing a criminal justice fiscal advisory committee. Counselor Iverson has outlined the charge for this body, and the council is currently reviewing the terms for its mission, makeup, and its deliverables. I can say that my intent for this fiscal advisory committee is to be transparent and inclusive in its activities. We will use a participatory approach to identify the investments needed for treatment and diversion programs, a restorative and respectful justice facility, and community reentry supports. We will request fiscal recommendations from this committee for facilities and programs, including capital and operational funding that support the justice process from prevention through rehabilitation. Finally, I am confident that we will work in tandem with other decision-making bodies over the next several months. We will stand ready to support a better, more compassionate approach to justice. And we will be confident that our reasoning is evidence-based and was constructed collaboratively with the wisdom of input from across our community.
And so what's the date of the meeting that, that we intend to consider the creation of said commission?
I would like it to be, I would like to have something before us for our next meetings on the 23rd. So everybody has a copy of, of what Peter has drafted, and comments are to go to Michelle and Molly.
Our next meeting is May 9th, so you're one.
Our next meeting is not the 23rd, it's the 9th. Can we do it by May 9th? I think we can.
I think so.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So if you could get your comments in, in the next few days. And then I'll, I'll be in touch, Ms. Turner King.
And that draft will be in the pack.
And that draft will be in the packet, so it'll be available to the public.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
And that packet is that packet is available usually by Friday afternoon of the week before the meeting.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, evidently, maybe that came through when I had I had no internet this morning for some reason.
It should have come in yesterday, and it was sent to all council members from.
I received something from you.
No, from Michelle.
It came from Michelle this morning at eight fifty or yesterday morning at eight fifty eight AM.
Well, at any rate.
I can get it.
So I haven't had time to look at that. Must have missed it someplace along the way. But I want to go back to where we where we started. What was that, two years ago, whatever, a long time ago? And for those of you who were around at that time, you might remember that I thought that the justice side county government should be having the meetings to to bring to the civil side, the commissioners, the council, what they thought that we needed, because they're the experts on that. And then we would be at the same time, looking at every kind of financing option and and so forth, because that's our job. And and after all of that was done, then it would become time to gather together. That's not the way it happened. And believe me, I wish it had because I think I was right. Because the justice side is never, and rightfully so, they're elected to do their thing. And they've never wanted the civil side to tell them what you did, nor would it do any good, because we don't have the authority to. The same as they don't have the authority to tell us. So it seems to me, and I don't know what you sent out, so maybe I'm headed a different direction.
So it's in your inbox right now.
So what?
It's in your inbox right now. I just forwarded it to you.
But I'm just saying, that was my theory then, and I haven't seen a whole lot to change my mind. Now, maybe you folks have got it all figured out, but I hope you don't put together another group that can just argue with one another. Because that's your type is more important than that than that, and so is their time, everybody's time, yes.
Well, I think our intent is to put together a body that has representatives from not just county government, but outside county government in the community across all the disciplines that have a stake and try to utilize their expertise to inform the fiscal decisions that we have to be making. So it's not exactly what you're talking about, but it is more along the line of let's focus on what we can have control over in terms of decision-making, and let's make the best decision we can, and let's root it in the reality of our community. There's a lot of of information. So yes, I'm there's always the potential that that a large group or a diverse group isn't going to have, you know, a unanimous opinion, but I think a well-facilitated group and one that has a specific directive, which that I, if you'll read the document, Peter's kind of outlined a very specific directive that I think will keep people more on task.
And is time sensitive.
And it's time sensitive.
Committee ends in the fall. So we can't drag our feet here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
We're trying to. Do what we can. Any other council comment? All right. Then let us move to item seven on the agenda. Since we removed item six, and that is an item from emergency management.
Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management department's request for new count lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations and fund one thousand zero three six one general fund emergency management in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in the services category. Second.
Great. And do we have? Where is he? Oh, there's Justin. Welcome.
Counsel. Yes. Good evening. The emergency management department has established two letters of agreements to with two organizations within the county that can provide services post disasters. One agreement is for structural engineering by B F W Crane Incorporated. This agreement serves the purpose of establishing a person to contact locally in the event of a structural collapse. The second agreement is with Sunbelt Lentils Incorporated for heavy equipment such as forklifts or generators that may be needed in response to an incident. These agreements are to be to serve as a backup plan if our office is unable to obtain a needed resource during an incident in a timely manner. The department is requesting additional appropriation for this matter. We took this information to the county commissioners, and they approved of it. Tabled it for your appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes.
Yeah. So is this, would this money be spent regardless? Or is this money, is this just an appropriation that's there in case either of these two, either the the services of the structural engineer or the or the equipment are needed?
This will be, this is going to be serving as a backup plan. So we're going to try to seek equipment, especially the equipment through donations if possible, or I know we have a couple assistance programs that's available for like heavy equipment such as forklifts. So we will use those before we use this. So it's kind of like a backup plan. Now, the structural engineer, that's one of the major things that we would probably have to spend the the money. Because with the recent building collapse and explosions that happened around the state, such as the Evansville explosion earlier last year. We found out that the state Department of Homeland Security does not have a backup plan. They don't have a structural engineer that's available. So that's kind of like on our own. So the structural engineering would probably be more used for the money for the application. But yeah, it's the it's pretty much a backup plan, if that makes sense.
But but if there is no structural collapse, will some or all of that five thousand dollar appropriation still be spent?
No, if there's no structural collapse, then no, it won't be.
Got it. Thank you.
That's the only thing that'll be used for is if we need you hire a structural engineer for a structural collapse or building collapse or bridge collapse.
That is my question. Thank you. Doesn't sound good. Here with the Mac folks are here with us.
Everything okay, Mr. Baker?
Yes, I'm good.
Great. Mr. Deckard.
And so I I had a question for Justin and then a comment. So the question is, this is there, should the unthinkable bad occur? This is there for us to have that morning up to respond rather than us try to figure that out morning of. Am I saying that right?
Yes, exactly. Yes. These two agreements were pretty much to get the contact for these companies if we need it. Yes.
And and my my comment is, I hope that we never publicly ever have to talk about that line again, really, other than budget and reappraisal. But I want to applaud emergency management for thinking ahead on these things. And I suspect that their lives and the continued professionalization of everything they have to figure out, and that's a lot. So we appreciate that they're going to have to keep thinking down these avenues and county and all of our partners, township, city, fire, police, E M T, you name it, and beyond, not-for-profit. We'll have to think along that with it. So I encourage more of this rather than less because these things do matter, and this council can't wait forty-eight hours on a called meeting a morning of a unmentionable unmentional. And we hope that that never occurs, but we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't do things like this. So I appreciate Justin bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this item? Okay, in that case, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great.
Thank you, everyone.
Now we're at item eight from our treasurer. Welcome, Ms. McClellan.
I am sorry, I'm going to help plant a tree after.
Oh.
So I'm here today because I wanted to have a discussion with you all about something that I'm really interested interested. This is a this is a want. It's I'm just, I just want to talk to you about this program that I think would be really beneficial to the county and the treasurer's office, and it would really help professionalize the investing decisions that get made by the treasurer. So I heard this is sponsored by N A C O, and I heard about this last year. It's called Cash Vest by Three Plus One. And what it really does is it is a liquidity management tool. So it will help the treasurer's office see how much there is in cash flow, which is like the waves of the ocean always going up and down. But underneath that, we have a liquidity, which is all of the money that we have in reserve that is not needed on a daily basis. It helps, it looks at our data points. And it helps us analyze with data and not opinions and not guessing and not just playing it safe. It really gives us the data that we need to make sure all of our money is being put to use. I heard about this a year ago, and I heard about how it gives time horizons and analyzes your cash flow and give times horizons for how much time money can be in different buckets, like two to five years for long term, one to two years for short term, and then CDs like one year, and then just general savings. And I thought, wow, that sounds really, really interesting. I can do that myself. And then the reason this is such a great program is because we don't have the time or the expertise to do that. So this is being used by higher ed, a lot of utilities, cities, counties, and towns, cities, towns and counties. We've done a demo. Cheryl was at the demo and Commissioner Githens and Angie. And I'm really here to start the the discussion. I'm very interested. I'm sure you guys have questions. I want everybody, this isn't the formal ask, like, please give me the money that I need to to be part of this program, but I want I I want to hear what you guys think. It's going to really professionalize investing for the county. So what we our deliverables from this are, we do not pay until we make the money that it would cost nine thousand nine hundred dollars for our county, which is very reasonable, I think, compared to like investing fees. We don't pay until we make money. We get a quarterly report. It benchmarks all of our bank fees so that we can see where we are in the industry, and we can go and get better bank fees. It benchmarks all of our interest rates. It helps us put our money into different buckets so that the treasurer knows what she shouldn't, what they should invest. It stress tests our liquidity. So worst case scenario, if something really terrible were to happen, how much money would we need? I'm not the professional presenter either about this program, so I'm kind of doing the best I can, giving you all the information, but I my impression was it is a very, very good program, and I'm very interested. So I'll stop jabbering for a minute. Cheryl, did you want to add anything that you learned from the presentation?
I just want to thank you for inviting us to to attend this PowerPoint presentation by the company, and I thought it was very informative. It seemed it seemed to me a confidential way of managing liquidity. And I was I was very taken with the number of local government units that participate in this. And we all know that we want to get the best bang for our liquid buck.
Right.
And I would like to know something about our own liquidity when you are prepared to tell us about that. And I would be interested in seeing a graphic that shows the the cumulative interest earnings relative to liquidity, and then the payment to the to Cash Vest as a company so that we know what it's costing us to to make additional income. Because there's a price for it.
Yes, there is a price for it. Yes.
And I think I was particularly interested because I learned that that interest rates on CDs have certainly changed greatly over the last month. And it was time to to pay attention.
Thank you, Cheryl. That brings to mind a couple other points is that they're objective. They they work for cities and towns. They don't work for banks. They're public officials. They work for public officials. They have their their objective. Let's see, what else did I write down here? We would communicate directly with our, we'd have a representative that I would communicate directly with quarterly or even more often. We would get we would get industry benchmarks for what CDs are going for. They would even help us go out and bid for CDs if we wanted them to, or the elected official could do it on their own. It's it seems really flexible, and it seems like it's going to make immediate, an immediate difference in our investment income. Our cash on hand at our lowest level is about a hundred and forty-one million. And if I could have you guys turn to page seven, that looks, it looks like this. It says liquidity displayed for decision-making. Something that they do is that they help us, they help us determine our total strategic liquidity is. And so they take working capital, how much money, stress test, how much money you would need to to run the county, run county business every month. And then you have your total strategic liquidity, and that's how much you could be earning earning interest on. And I have to tell you that it's really not a specific, it's not an exact science for the treasurer. I want it to be more professionalized. There is a lot of 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 guesswork because I'm not a professional at this, and I don't want the county to be in a bad position. We give ourselves a really big cushion, and we're still going to have a really big cushion. I would just like to have the data analysis to back it up and know what we're doing because we're we're getting all this ARPA money. We're getting opioid funding, settlement funding. There's really a lot of more money flowing into the county at this point in time, and I feel like it's, I'm not doing my due diligence if I don't at least present this to you guys. We have a discussion like what about how much better the county could be doing? So last year, this is embarrassing, last year, the county only made three three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in interest. I mean, I know we were coming, just coming off COVID. Our our best year since I've been treasurer was twenty nineteen. We made one million five hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then it went down in twenty 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 to five hundred thousand, and then it just tanked in twenty twenty-one to a hundred and seventy-three thousand, and now we're climbing back up. Last year was three hundred and seventy-six thousand. This year, so far this year, we've already surpassed that. We've already surpassed three hundred and seventy-six thousand. So it's climbing up just naturally, but I really feel like I could be doing me and not just me, future elected officials in this county, and you guys would have information from me about it. Commissioners would have information. I feel like there would be so much more data for us to really dig into, and I I love the data, and I, like I said, I wish I could do this myself, but I have found over the past year that I just haven't had time. Who else? Yes, other questions?
First question, how which other counties in Indiana are?
We would be the first county in Indiana to do this. Yeah, we, there are no other counties in Indiana doing it. I can find out whether they're mainly, you know, where their scope of work really is. I know they're in New York.
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to find out if there were other counties that have, you know, limitations on their investments that we are kind of similar to.
And I'm very on top of, yes, those limitations on our investments, and I think other states do. And I think other states do have that for their public entities. And I'm, I'm very interested in seeing, you know, where we can go despite all that.
And so, yeah, I'm actually looking at the, uh, report that actually we're going to be discussing here later tonight. And it looks like an assumption of $500,000 was used in the general fund to build the general fund budget, uh,
Yes.
for this year. Does that sound familiar?
And that sounds familiar and I think we will surpass that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the upshot is that that number could increase. You, you think that it could increase more than the $9,000 that it would cost to use this.
Oh, yeah. Uh-huh. All right. This, I know that, I know that salesmen give you these nice numbers to like, you know, really get you really excited. But this page at the, the big purple chart, if you look at client number two, their overall liquidity and overall, average liquidity, overall cash on deposit is 146 million. We're about 141 at our low point. And I know we have to keep, you know, we're not going to give away tax dollars. We're not going to invest. We, we have to keep track of all our tax dollars too. Okay, sorry. My point is client number two, 146 million. The last column, total cumulative interest earnings since using Cash Vest, nine million, 9.1 million. Why am I not making, like, what, I mean, I have a lot of questions about this chart, you know, what year is this from? And, and but why am I not making 9.1 million? That's my next question. How can I get closer to that?
Yes, but most recent 12-month period
Yeah.
is over, is over a million.
And you, and you only pay the 9,000 something fee if you actually, if they demonstrate the, uh,
Yes.
or the increased revenue.
Yes. Yes, Marty.
Uh, yes, I listened when you made this presentation or something similar to it. It's been a year ago now, right? When you met with the commissioners, and I remember you talking with commissioners about something similar to this. And, um, the thing I like the best about it is you will not always be the treasurer. Right? There's rules. You can't stay there forever. And so for a brand new treasurer, it would be good to feel like they had something there that was helping them keep an eye on it. I would really like to see it be a, a company from Indiana because our rules are different. And not every new treasurer might know what the new rule, what the rules are for Indiana. So I don't know whether you have a list of folks you might use to do something similar here in Indiana.
I'll look into this. Um, their, part of their pitch is that they're one of the only come, one of the only groups doing this nationwide. And that's part of the reason why NACO, uh, endorses them and is sending them to Indiana to help us get started in this program. And, um, but I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, uh, about it being an Indiana company. But also because our Indiana rules are so specific. As the treasurer getting it started, I would definitely make sure that they were 100% on top of all those Indiana rules. And making sure that our tax dollars stay liquid so that we can disperse that. We're not like a city in town or town that has to give, that collects, you know, $90 million and then has to send it back out in a month. You know, there are things that are different about county treasurers. There's things that are different about Indiana. Um, and I'm very aware of that. And I will look for, I don't have a list of other people that do this, other than like a, a private, you know, I'm sure, you know, like, a private financial solutions group may, maybe does something like this, you know, or REDE Financial or, or somebody like this might do that. Or somebody like that might do this, but I can find out.
And you might ask your treasurer's association if anybody uses
I could do that, yes.
of that sort. Uh, I know our county council association is becoming very, very informed. And I'm very proud, uh, the county councils throughout the state because they are really working to make sure that their voices are heard. And the treasures, though doubt, have a group that meet the same. So, but I thank you for considering this because, um, while it may cost something to make the money, uh, if we may, if we end up with more, but the question might really be someone might, might really question, why are we hanging on to so much money? And still charging so much taxes for folks. And I know the ARPA money is a, a big chunk of money that's coming in until we spin that down. And then we have to look and we'll be seeing a report here shortly to show us where our cash is setting and how much, uh, extra that we have that perhaps we don't have charged as much in the way of taxes. There's some legislation going on now that's making it clear, we don't really have to charge all that we're charging, so.
There is a very interesting analysis they can do, um, relating how much you make in interest to how much your taxes could go down. So it could make an, it could have an effect on, um, on tax, on our, our tax rate.
As, as the interest rates go up, I know, we used to watch this very carefully when we were making our projected budget, counting on a huge chunk of money
Yeah.
there coming for interest. So, thank you.
Well, you remember when we used to hold the school money and the child welfare money?
Yeah, try not to even disperse.
Yeah, we had three million, 3.1 million dollars in interest income while I was on the council and you're
Yeah, it was just like, oh, let's hang on to it. We don't have to disperse it yet.
Yeah.
And then I think they changed rules and said, no, no, you can't just hang on to it. It's called the Monroe County Rule.
So, thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing this. Um, I've never been the liaison to your department. So I'm going to ask some questions that maybe other people who have been liaisons to your department would know. But you mentioned a couple of times that you'd like to use this, um, tool to professionalize, uh, what's happening in the treasurer's department. And my question to you is, if, if you were to do similar things, if you were to develop quarterly reports or stress tests or similar things that's happening here, do you have the FTEs to do that work right now?
Um, quarterly reports, yes, because that's really just, it's just summarizing information that I already have. But stress tests, no, I do not.
Okay. And, and then Mike, once, you know, if, if we go down, you know, use this tool, how public is the data? Uh, will there be, uh, a, a website people can go to, like, you know, or, I mean, what, what is, what do other communities do? I mean, this is taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, that's a really great question. I would definitely look into see what other communities are doing. And I think the information is completely public. So I think we would, we could find the best way to present this on our website, um, to, yeah, to the community.
Okay. And then my final question is, um, do you know how long the contract period is with Cash Vest?
It's annual.
Okay.
So it's one year. So we would definitely, if we did use it, we would definitely evaluate after one year or, you know, what, how I thought the program worked. You know, dollars, how much we made. But I, it's really important to have a good relationship with an Indiana county, um, for Indiana, for this, for an Indiana county. So I'm, I'm very particular about how, how those representatives treat us when they're coming from out of, if they're coming from out of state.
Wonderful. And I, you know, just being able to have that data readily available, not so much, I mean, for the public, that's important. But I was also thinking to reduce, uh, silos within, uh, county government so that departments can work freely with the, the data to, for, for different purposes. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Well, and you might want to take a look at, she does, uh, monthly reports. So you might want to take a look at those reports. She has the balance with the auditor with that. Have you looked at those reports?
I have seen those reports. Yes, those are wonderful.
Thank you. They are wonderful.
Other questions or Counselor Deckard?
And I think if I understand you right, if we did this, because we'd be the first county in Indiana, this would make us a very special client for this organization. And they're likely not to, 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 to give us a hard time about anything. What I, what I like about this is it is being smarter with our dollars.
Yes.
And gosh, it's hard enough to figure that out for our own checkbook and savings accounts as individuals, let alone what you're dealing with. And anyone that's followed government knows there are dollars. Literally, we had an appropriation for EMAC where $15,000 will sit there, hopefully never be used. But those dollars, what can we do with those dollars? What can you do with rainy day funds? I mean, the state alone has had between four to six billion dollars in their surplus. I'd be curious what they do, if they do this at all. Maybe you could give them advice. But also kind of, I think, alluding to some of what Counselor Hawke would say. I'd also, and, and you'll know this better than any of us. I know the scuttle on what the state will or will not allow to be done. Or what they eventually may not allow to be done, because I, I remember the time they, they got mad when cities were collecting plastic trash bags. And said, then, well, you can't collect plastic trash bag. So you're our very beloved treasurer. I would want you to have to deal with all that. So maybe sniff that out, but I love anything that maximizes potential. Because if we're talking about 300, $500,000, that's several jobs.
Absolutely.
Highway, truck, you name it. And so I appreciate you thinking like this, because this is what we have to do to, to manage those dollars right.
AIC is behind this program too. AIC knows about this and AIC, they, they sent them to Jessica. They're like, go talk to Jessica.
Awesome.
And a few other counties, but they did come talk to me. They, they thought I would be interested because AIC thought it sounded like a good program too. So there is a lot of interest in Indiana.
Yeah.
Kind of swirling around. Okay.
So I was going to ask about AIC, so I'm very glad to know that you're in, you're connected with them. Uh, I would like to mention that there are other funds, uh, not, uh, managed by the county, but other large funds, uh, that are needed for security. Uh, for example, um, the landfill, uh, fund in case, uh, emergency monies would be needed. And so that money is tied up, but that doesn't mean it could not be possibly also, uh, bringing, uh, bringing better interest. And so that was something that I, I worked on when I was on the board, is to get some interest being generated by that, those monies. But from what you've presented, there's a, uh, a greater possibility.
We have added some, some good things in Monroe, Monroe County that I have shared with Solid Waste, like Trust Indiana, the government investment pool. And then we added government bonds. Um, so we have been moving, we have been moving in a little bit more professionalized direction, just as time has gone on, things, you know, things have become easier for counties. And I think that, that this is probably the next, definitely the next step for Monroe County is to, to go this route. Because, you know, we've added some really good things that more than just, um, CDs are great and CDs are really great right now. Um, but CDs and, and money market accounts, I think there's more that we can do. Yeah. Okay.
No, it's, it's good. It's the next step for you.
Yeah, next step would be, I think that I will, uh, reach out to the commissioners again. Um, I would, we'll talk about funding. So I have a draft agreement. Um, I would ask the commissioners, uh, you know, I think I'll bring this to you. And then I'll also reach out to my liaison and to, and to Cheryl, since she was there. And the rest of you say, I'll probably bring this to council and formally ask for funding. And give you guys a chance to think about it, ask questions. If any, like really huge concerns pop into your heads, just let me know. And we can talk about it at your next meeting.
That sounds great.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for, for coming to our meeting and bringing it.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Make the presentation. All right, um, we are now at item nine and we'll have a presentation from Chris Myers with Area 10 on Aging. I believe Chris is on Zoom.
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, do I need to share my screen for the PowerPoint or is that something that's going to happen because I emailed it? Do you know? If not, I can
Okay, just to say.
Okay.
Yes, she, she could probably just share her screen.
If you've got it. Oh, okay. All right, we'll have it up here in just a minute.
Okay. Well, while we wait for that, I just wanted to say thank you for having me. Um, thanks for asking for a rural transit update. I know the agenda had mentioned, um, an update on the electric vehicles, which I hadn't done, but I'm happy to answer any questions on that as well. But I, I thought that, um, Counselor Wilton asked for just a general update for rural transit. And so that's what I did, but certainly feel free to interrupt, ask questions and, uh, we'll go from there. But, um, you can go to the next slide. Please. Yeah, so, uh, rural transit is a public transportation service, as you're familiar with. But what a lot of people may not remember is that we cover four counties. Um, so we do three different types of services in those four counties, one of which and the majority of which is in Monroe County. But Monroe, Owen, Lawrence and Putnam Counties, um, are also served through the 5311 program, um, grant funds that the county receives on our behalf. Uh, we also have an express route or what's called, um, Point Deviation Route. That's in Putnam County and Greencastle. So that's kind of like what you have in Bloomington Transit or, you know, city areas where it's kind of a fixed route idea. But we actually deviate up to three quarters of a mile, um, off of that route. And we do that in Greencastle in a very populated area because we can. It's not an urban area. They don't have the equivalent of Bloomington Transit there. And then we also do a lot of non-emergency medical transportation. And I'll talk about the first and third, um, next. So if you want to go to the next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you. So demand response is a lot of what we do, right? So we are, you, you call, you make an appointment, you have someplace you need to go. We pick you up at your door and we take you to your destination. Um, that's not like the fixed route in, in Bloomington. And we do that Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Currently, we are only operating three routes in Monroe County. Um, these are routes where they just pay $3 each way and it's available for anybody. So we have people who use that for work. We have people who use it for school. We have people who use it for, you know, medical things, shopping and all kinds of other activities. Uh, it's not just because we're Area 10 Agency on Aging, it is not for just the, uh, seniors and the physically disabled individuals. Next slide, please. And the non-emergency medical transportation is an important piece of what we do though. Um, that is for individuals who do, um, have, um, a medical appointment needs and are on Medicaid. Uh, we usually have one driver and one minivan that's available in Monroe County to make those trips, uh, when needed. Uh, that can fit typically three per day. And if it's long distance, one, obviously if we're going to Indianapolis, we can't typically go there, come back and do that a couple of times, um, when they have a medical appointment because of the waiting that's involved to make sure that's transferred. The Medicaid revenue is an important piece for our local match, which you'll see later when I kind of do a brief overview of our budget situation. And, uh, you may be familiar, you may have heard about some of the, um, concerns that have happened when the state of Indiana several years ago went to a state broker for transportation. It was with Southeast Trans, which is now called Verita. But that is who we work with, um, to meet those ongoing needs, which is still very important in the county. Next slide, please. So current fleet utilization, um, just again, to give you an idea and just current utilization in general. Um, for the whole system, for the four counties, we have 14 vehicles in use. Um, we have 27 vehicles total when they all run. All operational. Uh, we have several that are not operational right now. And we have the five that we've been, most recently been able to purchase, thanks to the ARPA funds from Monroe County that will be used, um, for Monroe County transportation, which is wonderful. Um, in Monroe County specifically, right now, we're operating with four vehicles. We have the potential to have six more dedicated to those routes as we can increase routes and, um, utilization of transit. As we get further into more normalization and people going out and using transportation and, uh, things that had kind of taken a big dive during the, the pandemic. And just as a kind of parallel to the vehicles, you know, you need vehicles and you need drivers, right? So, um, we also have system-wide 19 drivers right now. So just like we are kind of down in, in trips, we're down in drivers. Um, that consists of eight full-time drivers and 11 part-time drivers right now. And in Monroe County, that's seven, four part, four full-time and three part-time. Um, I'll talk a little bit later about how that's very significantly different than what we had pre-COVID. Um, we also borrow from Owen County, uh, a substitute driver or, you know, kind of cross, cross between the two counties. Um, because we get a lot of, um, transportation between those two counties, um, for drivers. Next slide, please. So what are we seeing in Monroe County specifically, uh, 2022? So our, our grant and our program year run January through December. So what are we seeing in Monroe County specifically on twenty twenty-two? So our our grant and our program year run January through December. Um, so this is giving you not a fiscal year, but an actual fiscal program year, which is January through December of twenty twenty-two. Monroe County trips are was ninety-six hundred and twenty-eight. That's one-way trips. That is half of what it was in twenty nineteen. Um, we took a huge, like all other public transportation did, um, took a huge dive when COVID came and we've been climbing back out. So we have been showing and just like everyone else, a a great increase month over month, which is promising and wonderful. And we're very happy to be there, but uh, we are definitely down um, on on transportation from twenty nineteen from, you know, to twenty twenty-two. But to give you an idea, you know, rural transit puts a lot of miles on the bus, right? We drive a lot of of those county roads and it shows in our miles. So revenue miles is the actual, you know, counter for when we go pick up. And then when we take two. So um, any transportation in between or service miles or anything like that doesn't get counted in this. Um, that's just the revenue miles for providing those particular trips. So an average trip really is over twelve miles. We, and to give you an idea of demand, I wanted to put this in there too. From Monroe County alone, we have um, you know. Trips requests that come in that we can't meet right now. Um, part of that was because of vehicles and part of that's because of drivers. So we know that there are people who need it and that we can build backup. Um, but we have quite a few that are medical trips that are needed that we can't meet right now. And that's forty-four one-way trips on average. Looking at the past six months and then other non-medical requests are about thirty-eight per month that um, are not being met. Your current needs. Next slide, please. So the next slide is a um, just basic table to kind of give you an idea of how the funding works. For those of you that might not be familiar. You know, the county receives through NDOT, a pass-through grant from the FTA. It's called Program Fifty-three Eleven. That is the rural transportation. Funding. So urbanized areas get fifty-three oh seven funding and they get that directly through FTA usually. Um, ours is it's a fifty percent match or so you have fifty percent of your net expenses that are covered by that program funding. Um, the state does allocate what's called public mass transit funds. It, you know. Formula-wise is supposed to be like twenty-five percent. It never, in my time, and every time I've been there nine years, it's it's not been twenty-five percent. It's more like twenty percent. That comes through uh, to help towards that local match. And then the rest has to be done through uh. The rest has to be done through through the local um, avenue of revenues and and that kind of comes in a various different categories. One of which is supposed to be county government allocations for local match support. And then other state and non-federal local funds that can be used and then in-kind. Those are the big categories. So for for rural transit, the way we have tried to piece together local support for that um, has been for asking for for government support from the four counties. Medicaid revenue, like I talked about for that NEMT coverage, contract services. So, you know, we really would be up a creek. If we didn't have um, our stone belt and our lark and our, you know, sweet Owen Industries or those particular IDD populations. Where we're helping them with transportation needs and having contract services that help us with that revenue. Um, AAA, that's area agencies on aging. So we serve Putnam County, which is not area ten's area. It's it's a different area and we get some. Title III Older American Act funds that we can help allocate towards meeting transportation needs of seniors. So we, between the two. Organizations contribute some about forty thousand dollars towards that a year. And then bus ads, which, you know, is pretty tiny. Um, it's actually gotten a lot less in the years. Um, and we'd have to pay, you know, of course, unrelated business income tax on on any of that. So that's the the gross amount that hits the budget. Is is there a question?
No.
Okay, that's okay. The next, the next couple of slides, take this kind of general overview and put it into an example of what's. Estimated for twenty twenty-four. We had to just now go through our estimation for our grant renewal for twenty twenty-four. So this kind of gives you a better. Picture of actual expenses and revenue uh, for each of those categories. So if you go to the next slide, please. That will show you the re- uh, the expenses. I have two columns here for expenses, and I usually do this for the commissioners, because I like to show this is what we really think we're gonna spend. And this is what we could spend if we had, you know, more local match actually to pull and 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 match up against the FTA allocation. So we every year leave funds on the table for FTA because we do not have the local match to pull that down. And area ten is a local nonprofit and, you know, just like any other nonprofit, we have to watch every penny that we have. Um, and we're not going to front the expenses that we can't get reimbursed for other ma- means to operate public transportation. So. It's important to be transparent about that. Um, so this is, you know, the 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 top half of the graph here on this page is the the. Estimated expenses, we're looking at twenty twenty-four being about one point five million that we. Um, would spend as we are right now, operating at the end of twenty twenty-two and into twenty twenty-three with um, you know, reasonable increases. You know, about ten percent in in many of the areas. And then if you go to the next slide. It'll show the revenue area. We have to um, off the top, we have to remove the fares that we collect. So anything we collect in fares. Doesn't actually go towards the formula for how much FTA will give us towards those net expenses. Um, so that's just kind of part of that calculation. And then our, you know, the the categories, this is literally out of the grant. So the general fund appropriation is the category, other unrestricted federal and state. And then in-kind, like I explained before, I highlighted the other unrestricted federal and state because that's the bucket, right? That's the one that if we don't have the funds, that's where we, you know, we plug it as unknown. Um, and and hope that we can and build that up to try and get sufficient support to to operate. We know an estimation of the state PMTF funds. Um, it's not expected to increase for the twenty twenty-four. Sometimes it increases by a pittance and sometimes it doesn't. So we, that's what we're expected to put in for the budget. And then the um, federal funds are. That's the amount that we are allocated for our four county service area is the that third column over eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. If we use the full allocation, that would be what we'd pull down from the feds for transit. The next slide. So this kind of breaks out and helps break out that local match in a little bit more detail. Um, just to kind of give you an idea of what we do to piece together and how that currently comes through the pipeline. Um, in-kind, we're able to partner um, with a few different of the counties and get free space. Free phone, uh, free internet, which is really valuable. Uh, it would otherwise hit the expense and did otherwise hit the expense. So I was able to convert Owen and Putnam County in the last few years to um, donated space, which is helpful. Um, and then general fund, those are the various entities. Um, the town of Spencer is really the only government fund uh, in Owen County. That's contributing. If you haven't read the paper or other news sources, uh, Owen County government is not necessarily operating. In the best um, efficient way that can contribute towards public transportation right now, unfortunately. Um. And then we have the other, the other broken out in a little bit more detail. So you see what Putnam County can provide in their Older Americans Act. And then um, area ten through Monroe and Owen County, what we estimate for for Medicaid. And then the other category that highlighted one, which is the unknown. So what I do know. And what I don't know for contract or possible contract revenue for that um, is noted in those boxes. So we know that we've got about a hundred and three thousand in real revenue that we can count on for um, contract services. And then we have eighty-one thousand currently and, you know, eighty-two thousand currently that we would not know or be able to have right now. For twenty twenty-four in order to support, you know, essentially operations as is for twenty twenty-four. And then, of course, if we were to use the full amount. And utilize it for transportation, we would need another two hundred and forty-three thousand. Um. So that that kind of gives you an an overview of what we're dealing with operationally. If you go to the next slide. I just wanna kind of briefly overview where, you know, where we are right now. Um, for staffing challenges. We we are still trying to staff back up with drivers. Um, Monroe County, like I said, is at four full-time and three part-time. Where we were in twenty nineteen when we were doing twice as many routes, um. Was, you know, ten, ten and three. Uh, we're looking at, you know, shortfall of about two hundred weekly hours of transportation or five routes. We used to regularly run eight routes in Monroe County, demand response. So that's kind of the lost potential right now. Um, that we'd like to get back to. And, you know, the other concern is, and, you know, I think it was sometime early last year when we were offered the opportunity to have a bump in our FTA. Match to bring pay up for drivers, which is part of the problem. Of course, you know, everybody has had that problem with staffing. Um, I I sent emails out to every county, tried to reach every county to see if there was any kind of. Um, positive feedback and trying to pursue that in order to bring our drivers up in higher pay. And I'd got no, no response from any of the elected officials except for the town of Spencer. So I didn't pursue an increase in FTA funds, even, you know, I I I just can't make that kind of. Promise for something that I don't think I can necessarily get in deliverables from from county government. So. Um, you know, that it's a challenge, you know, it's public transportation is absolutely needed. I know it's absolutely supported. By everyone as a public service, but, you know, where the rubber meets the road, quite literally, we need to have the funding in order to do that, right? Um, and that's an ongoing challenge for us. So I am happy to take any questions that you have. Um, and if I don't know the answer, I'll get it, get it for you.
Thank you so much. Um, that was a lot of of really good information. Um. And there are hands raised. So councillor McKim.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chris. This is, this is great. Um, I do have a a couple of questions. First of all, the I and your RT door-to-door slide. Your three routes in Monroe County that I want to make sure I understand what routes means in the context of door-to-door. Does that just mean you have three drivers, three buses going at once?
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Right. And then second question, can in a door-to-door uh, trip, can either end be inside the city of Bloomington? Or do both have to be outside the city of Bloomington?
Currently, in the way it's always historically been, one of those legs has to be outside of the city of Bloomington. Yeah, so city to county, county to city is how we have been doing things.
Okay, but somebody who lives, for example, in the city of Bloomington could use rural transit to travel to something outside of the city.
Absolutely, yeah.
Or work at at Cook or something like that. Okay.
Yep, or K E, yeah.
And then also just on the on the local match, the local funding. So you've got sixty-six thousand um, listed for the twenty twenty-four budget. I'm looking at actually the report that we're about to um, consider now. And it had actually, I believe that we have eighty thousand appropriated for twenty twenty-three. But I'm wondering if some of that is for something else in rural transit that doesn't count toward the match or.
I'm not aware of anything to support operations outside of the sixty-six thousand. I would be happy to have. Eighty thousand instead of sixty-six thousand, but I'm 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 not aware of any.
Okay, and I mean, they're that they're, I I assume there has, there's an MOU with the commissioners that actually. Uh, allocates that money, but I, but there is eighty thousand in the appropriate and in the budget right now.
Okay.
Um, for rural transit. And then finally, what would our local match have to be to max out the FTA reimbursement? What should we be to not leave any FTA money on the table?
Two hundred and forty-three thousand more than what we have right now.
Two forty-three more than you have now?
Wait, that that would be forty-three thousand more in local match?
That's right, local match.
That would get us how much in additional FTA?
Three hundred. I think we're leaving three, two hundred and, hang on a second, I've got that. Three hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay.
That's left on the table. Yep.
Other questions? Uh, councillor Decker?
I want to make sure I'm understanding based on what councillor McKim's question was and and your answer. If we were to max uh, maximize that local match between the dollars, we would be allocating in the FTA dollars. We're talking about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in additional dollars for you, period. Is that right?
So it's three hundred and thirty thousand total and the estimated budget additional if we had the full FTA. If we had two hundred and forty-three thousand more in local match, we would pull down all of the FTA that we aren't right now. Right? And that's a hundred and sixty-one on the, on slide nine is a hundred and sixty-one thousand of unused FTA. Remember, yeah, so the the first column, we already know that we have eighty-one thousand. We don't have right now. In order to pull down the. You know, the seven hundred and thirty-two thousand and uh, fifty-three eleven funds. I know it's complicated. If we had the slide back up. I know that's a pain in the butt, but um, you also have that too. So if you look at slide nine, it'll have that laid out for you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it's complicated.
No, I I appreciate you bringing up the money left on the table.
Yeah.
Kind of been a theme we've had this evening.
Thank you to the tech person. Visual is so good.
Um, who, did you have your hand raised originally? I'm sorry.
Did, but there, I I don't know how you want it. Yeah, I did have it, yeah.
Go ahead.
Alright, thank you.
I've lost track of.
Uh, executive director Myers, thank you for being here tonight. Really appreciate the presentation. Um, the first question that I had is about, uh, let's see, was it about thirteen months ago? Uh, we uh, were able to get you some electric vans. How are those performing?
So you did allocate for electric vans and it was at the end of this year, uh, end of twenty twenty-two. And we were able to procure those and get those in March. I think I sent everyone a photo and.
Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations. We have, we're outfitting, we're actually waiting for the safety lift guards to be installed. So that goes in front of. The the ra- uh, not the ramps, but the lifts that go down, um, which are supposed to be done Monday and Tuesday. But we have had one of the five already out um, on the road. Fully outfitted, um, waiting for the lift guard. So we have them, they're all there, all of the chargers are there, everything works. It's quite wonderful.
Well, we love to hear that everything works. That's good. Uh, my next question is a little different. Um, I I'm interested in the um, the Medicaid. Uh, individuals using Medicaid for the reimbursable trips. Uh, you seen those, the percentage of those rides increase? Or stay the same? Or or how have you seen uh, those folks using uh, rural transit uh, since the pandemic or since before the pandemic? Excuse me.
So those, those took a huge dive, just like everything else in March of twenty twenty, but they have continually gone up and stayed. Parallel with the regular demand. I mean, the the amount that we're denying on medical trips because we don't have um, a a bus or a driver right now. Is about on par with where we were before COVID.
That's wild. And and if I heard you correctly, the the clog in the system is not more vehicles, although that would be helpful. But it's the drivers. Is that correct?
That's correct. Drivers, we need drivers.
All right.
It's hard to compete with, you know, fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
You know, the people we get love their jobs, you know, we we are happy for that. And we get an older demographic a lot of times, but people, you know, they, our drivers are wonderful. They really are like caregivers.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Um. Jennifer, sorry, councillor Crossley.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I had a couple of questions. Um, going back to slide three where it's, it says to call reserve pickup, drop off at least three days in advance. I'm just curious. Um, do you have many folks that can't give you that much in advance? And if so, like, are you able to help them or what happens next after that?
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. And and that has been kind of our standby. What we have always said is three days in advance. I can tell you that we take same day. Um, regularly and and fit them in. And if we can't, we actually, you know, most of the time, the reason that we're on the phone all the time. Is helping them work out alternatives. So if it can't work today and you need it today, can, you know, can you get your appointment or can you get this? Can, you know, can we work towards tomorrow? is helping them work out alternatives. So if it can't work today and you need it today, can, you know, can you get your appointment or can you get this? Can, you know, can we work towards tomorrow or the next day? But, but that also is under, captured under those tryptanils, the all other per month. So we do have about thirty eight people or thirty eight one-way trips requests per month that are non-medical in nature that we, we simply can't fit.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question kind of goes back to slide eleven. Where we are talking about the shortage of drivers, of course, here in MCCSC. We know as a parent, the struggles of public transportation and how that definitely has major impact influences on community needs. But I guess my question to you would be, are you getting applicants, like qualified applicants? And are they just not taking it because of pay? Or I'm just curious to know, like, what are you getting in terms of applicants for the positions to fill? The, the drivers?
Yeah, there, I will say that happily, we've at least received some applicants and qualified applicants since January. And then some people will drop, you know, the problem is we've also had people who've had to leave, right? So we gain one, we lose one. Yeah, I think we just had one go back to part-time status because of medical situation, you know, things that are outside of our control for sure. But, but in general, you know, we hadn't been getting the applications at all. Prior to January and, and now it's pretty, it's pretty slow. So I mean, it might trickle in every once in a while, but we're not seeing, you know, we've had a job posting and a yard sign out for as long as I remember. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Hawk?
Yes, so.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't know it was on there. Let's say if someone worked an eight to five job and then they would have to get to wherever their pickup place would be, or maybe you're saying they would come directly to their house and pick them up. If they tell you so much in advance and say, and this is what I want for the next six months, whatever. Can they rely on being able to get to work at eight? So that they don't get fired for showing up late? And i- if that would be so, look how reasonable that would be if we're talking six dollars a day, five days a week, that's thirty dollars and you don't even have to buy the gas. You don't have to pay for the car or the car insurance or anything. I mean, very reasonable. Let's say four weeks. We know there's more than four weeks a month sometimes, but fourth day, that is a hundred and twenty bucks a month. And how many are spending far more than that on either leasing a car or trying to repair an old car that costs a fortune to keep taken care of and then just stopping at the filling station and knowing they went to grocery running? This would be a way to really be able to budget for those folks who need to budget and be able to get to work. So how reliable is it? Because they don't dare show up late for work.
Yeah, we, and we, we have historically been a reliable transportation source for people who are using it to get to work. So yes, of course, if somebody calls and they want to use it for their work transportation, just like they would their school, they can make that reservation and it'd be a kind of a standing reservation. But it has to be, like I'm saying, you know, we are short on drivers right now. So we would not commit to that unless we knew we had a slot at that time. And then once we have the slot, then of course that would be, you know, as long as they needed it and as long as we could go moving forward. It would be reliable. Yes, absolutely.
Well, I just want to share with you, if you can see this. Still very proud of this. It's a big thank you from the area, Tin Agency on Aging. I was on the board for a long time. It's dear to my heart. And so I, when I see a bus go by and we don't have it filled, and I know that there's people that need that transportation. I just somehow or the other, we need to get the message out and, and we need to help rural transit get that message out. I mean, you'd be surprised how many people follow along on Nextdoor or Facebook or some kind of media like that and reach our friends and our neighbors who could really use the, the service and they just either don't know about it or they think it's really for old folks like me. And really it's for people of any age. So.
Preaching to the choir. I completely agree about that. I just, I definitely want to get some more drivers before we get our bullhorns out too, too loudly.
Right, right. Um, how much do you think it's going to take to, for offering per hour to be able to get those driver positions filled?
I think if we could get it to fifteen dollars an hour, at least we'd be in better shape, but it really probably ought to be sixteen.
You're saying it's you're not fifteen yet? Is that what you're saying?
So they're at fourteen.
Yep, yep. And that, and I was just able to bring that up last year, late last year to fourteen. Yep.
That might be something that we need to take a hard look at to just maybe subsidize just for one year trying to get drivers accustomed to being there. It's real easy for them to get really committed to doing it because they, they really those drivers get to, they really get connected to the passengers. They, it's, it's a real emotional connection there. So that might be something we could look at. I mean, with the fiscal body, we can look at it. Doesn't mean we can have it, but.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments from Ms. Myers? Nope. Well, thank you so much for taking the time tonight. I really appreciate all the information. And you've given us a lot to think about as we approach another budget season.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being interested and your support now and, and all the years in the past as well. It's really an important service. We couldn't do it without you.
Yeah, I agree that it's important. Um, thank you. All right. Have a good night.
You too.
And now we're on to the next agenda item and welcome, Mr. Garrett Haas.
Thank you and thank you for having me and good evening. And I'll try and take the next hour.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here for the night.
That was just to make sure you were away. To go over the, the second part of the document, which we had talked about in September of last year, and this is kind of a fulfilling the the, bringing the document up to date for actuals of two thousand and twenty two. I'm telling you that to start out, you've got one of the most important documents as you proceed forward on your computers here, the sustainability and revenue and spending plan for as you proceed with any type of financing or any type of cash management or anything like that, should really pay attention because there's a lot going on here. In other words, it even tells you on the very back page, we're going to go, come to page one, the summary of the general fund, or maybe we'll go to the recommendations, sorry. But in the very back page, it shows you, it costs you about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars a day just in the general fund to run county government. That's just in one fund. And so there's statistics like that. And then, as you know, we've scheduled out most of the major funds. So number one document that the state, the rating agency asks for is your long-term budget plan. Number one document DLGF believes you should be looking at as budgeting your your funds more than one year. I'm serving on, I just got off a phone call this afternoon, a couple hours about the new gateway version that will be coming next year, not this year, good news. But, and it's going to have an emphasis in the new document about cash reserve. It's going to be red if it's going down. It's going to be green if it's going up. Because the most misunderstood thing is people are saying the DLGF approved my budget, so I should be okay. Well, they will approve it until your balance gets to zero, your reserve or your, your cash balance. And so that's one of the most misunderstood. They won't tell you to cut the budget until your reserve goes down to zero. Well, you don't want to be there because you won't have the credit rating you have today. That's for sure. So what I wanted to do is, is say, you know, it's a very valuable document, lots of information, a lot of times say, people will say two hundred pages, couldn't you do it some, a little more simple, simpler? And I think the whole point is, is the detail is in there. Now, where I believe you're heading and a very, very significant point is two thousand and twenty three and the realignment that you did in your salaries is going to be really telling. Okay, where we end up, I'm going to really look forward to the six thirty balances. Keep in mind, we always do an eighteen-month budget process. And the first six months is so valuable to what's going to happen the second six months. Because you know, you put in certain things into the budget in two thousand and twenty three for boosting up salaries for maybe retention of employees, some new employees. And I'm going to guarantee you that you will not probably spend all that. But I will also guarantee it will be significantly different than twenty two on the actual spend. And so that's going to be really carrying over. And you've already seen it. If you looked at the general fund, it's going to be really telling to where those cash balances head in twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. We did in the general recommendations section note that, that that's really the full implementation of the wage salary study is going to be very, very important. And I'm, I'm on some of the foot, the notes at the very beginning. Kim, I'm sorry, that wasn't on page one. So that was at the, yeah, so you're fine. We also put in some of general observations about some of the cash balances and then some recommendations too and general points. And I think some of these I went over with you back in September. So if we go to the general, if we go to the general fund, which is page one on the PDF, you'll see, and actually it folds up to page twenty two, you'll see the trend on the cash reserves as we implement the full two thousand and twenty three budget. You notice what we do down there is we put two very, two different line items on ending balance. One of them is with the assumption that you spend a hundred percent of your budget. And one of them is if you spend ninety nine, where'd we get ninety nine? We really look at this historical. We could have easily made that probably ninety five, but one more page. One more page. Yep, it's going to be the second page of the general fund. Should be page two. One more. Next one. That's the beginning part. And then I was focusing on those line items right there. Yes. So the one line with the assumed spend down and then the ending balance. Keep in mind then, what we also do is show you what we believe is the minimum fund balance. This is based upon standard operating procedures across the country of having a minimum reserve balance of approximately twenty percent. We like it when it's a lot stronger than that, and we believe it should be stronger than that because that would maintain your credit rating and also would be in conformance with some of your peer group. Keep in mind, that's what Standard and Coors and Moody's does is they take their, your peer group, not from the state of Indiana, but from the entire country and lots of they'll use college towns, they'll use different types of ones. I think we were Pervard County and Denver in Colorado was one of them with, that we were measured up to and that they shared with us. And so you, you know, it's not just how you're doing in Indiana, it's how you compare it across the, the country. So the implementation and how that spend occurs for the set first six months of two thousand and twenty three is really going to be telling. And you can see that we have projected on, at this point in time, a trending down of the cash balance and your COLAs and what you do for twenty four and twenty three. It's the number one subject that county councils are asking me right now. Matter of fact, I tell everybody in Hancock County, we start the budget for two thousand and twenty four in January. You know, we're all, we're already talking, where the income taxes go, second biggest source of revenue. Where on eight, on Saturday night at eleven fifty nine, if it takes that long, where the boys and girls, I call them boys, boys and girls downtown, where they come out at eleven fifty nine on Saturday night is going to be really, really telling. And that's going to change this story. And as you know, we have an evergreen document that we can kind of, if we get the best, latest and greatest information, we can put it in here. Getting, getting DLJAV to get the income taxes out quicker. The projections for two thousand and twenty four is very important for you, to you. And we've spoken they're working and working and working. That GIS system just won't like, line up the real-time income taxes for us any, anytime soon. So hopefully though, they'll be getting that out more in August. And the supplemental distribution should be coming out any, any week now. So that, that will play into how our revenues truly come in. And I think our revenues that are in here for two thousand and twenty three are conservative. There's no doubt about it. Because guess what? No one thought about in September, we didn't update that the interest income should go up significantly. But you also know Marty and Jeff's lived through it and, you know, interest income was really low too at different points in time. So that could change, but we believe that that will help you. And, but the income taxes and the effect of Bloomington changing the mixture is really been worked through here in very, very specific detail. And that's important. Because you, you know, that changes your added dollars, that changes your PSAP dollars, and you'll see those notes as you go through here. Now, I could go through several of these funds, but I do want to, I know you've been here almost two hours, getting about fifteen minutes. So I want to address some of the questions that you may have. And so I, I like to say fire at will. Cause I know the document, I, I, I helped put it together and I do review it in detail. So I know it well. So how can I help?
Thank you for being here and thank you for your patience waiting.
Thank you. And I really wanted to come in person and then that, that, you know, the Zoom thing works sometimes, but not always.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it. Clearly Jeff has no questions, so.
Why are you pulling down his hand?
No, no, these, these should be pretty simple. Just, just to clarify though, when, when you use the euphemism, changing the mixture, you're referring to annexation and.
Well, not only that, but they, they also control the rate and, 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 you know, right now, the number one thing that everybody is looking at is reproportioning, and I'm going to be speaking at two of the AIC budget seminars and that they'll be having in May. And one of the things we always caution everybody is to kind of look at where your income taxes are coming in. And if they're coming in at surplus in certain areas, realign them. Okay. So that maybe you're not increasing. So I don't want you to confuse that with increasing the tax rate, but realigning the components. And Jeff, that's what we saw and we've noted that on a couple of these funds.
PSAP lead, I know.
Yeah, yeah. And that's pretty, that's pretty important. So, so it's, it's, it actually can happen and we note the annexation, but it can actually happen with the realignment too. So you've got two things to be familiar with.
So, so then also you mentioned the, the fund balances and the, and the recommendations and the impact of fundraised, the fund balances on credit, our credit rating. Does, is, is the rainy day fund kind of taken into account in that calculation?
Well, here's what we're recommending in the recommendations is number one, you ought to set up and, and, and number one thing they do is ask for, what is your formal policy on fund balances? And so we, you know, and I've gotten, I've done this. And so we, you know, and I've gotten, I've done this for a while, okay? And and we've we've done minimum fund balance resolutions, and that's the best way to do it. And we stayed in that resolution, sometimes we call it target minimum. Okay, and so the wording is very, very important, but what everybody in in that would probably help your liquidity person, uh, your treasurer, determine what you want to see as a county council that is acceptable as far as a minimum fund balance and or a target to get to. And why I say that is, we believe in, some counties believe that a rainy day target should be ten million dollars, and they're at eight. And so they articulated as a target fund balance because they're striving to get there each and every year, but they want to set a peg of ten. Then that also helps you articulate to the community, you're not really hoarding dollars or excessively holding dollars, kind of like what I've heard uh Councilmember Hawk mention. And and that kind of addresses that too. So it's a great resolution, and one of them we're recommending you put together.
So can you provide model a model resolution that's been used? And because that I think that would be really helpful.
Here's what we usually do is we would, number one, we don't cover the dog catcher fund, and you don't have that. But uh, we we cover the majority of the funds. We'll take what I call a first strike at it and put it in there based upon these numbers. And then you would want to obviously review that and and uh memorialize that if you see fit in a final resolution.
Does everybody agree that that's the right way to proceed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Remember, you I know you're not a business, but we want to try and run government as efficient and effectively as a business we can.
Right, I just don't want us to have to write these from scratch when.
Sure, yeah, there's no need. And Jeff, I can get it to Jeff and Jeff can do his his magic on it.
You met the Jeff Cockrum.
Yes.
And then final question before I yield, um, I this is to go to the uh spend down percentage, the ninety-nine. I'm I'm still struggling with the ninety-nine percent in the general fund, just because, you know, in in twenty twenty-two and and Bree was just sending us, you just sent us out a report of the reversions. We had about two million dollars in uh unspent appropriations.
I put that in here, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if that ninety-nine percent is really accurate. Have we, I mean, we usually don't spend down that high a percentage of our.
Correct, but but what we saw is is you did bump up the salaries. That was a pretty big part of it. Then we also brought on new employees. Now, we didn't get the new count uh of how many of actual of those positions you you filled. But that's going to be forever telling. So Jeff, you're right, I went out on the proverbial limb with the assumptions that number one, those pay increases went through, those uh new hires came through. Um, and you may have had to give some of the retaining bonuses that you mentioned and and you've set up in your budget also. So when we see a large percentage of the budget being driven by payroll, and we know the needs of all the county county employees are underpaid, there's no doubt about it. And I can go to any county in the state of Indiana and show you that, except Bartholomew. They keep using that as the highest paid sheriff. Um, so and and I keep getting, everybody keeps trying to go to that pay scale and we can't. Um, so um, you know, that's why I consciously did that, but it's easy to show at a ninety-five level.
Well, I mean, I'm good with being conservative, I just want to make sure I was interpreting that.
That's that's why we did it.
Seeing in reversions.
Yeah.
Okay, and six thirty is important. You might want to align it if we show that you only spent forty-five percent or forty percent of your entire budget in the first half, but really the key is going to be how many of those new employees did you bring on?
And so we'll get a new version in early July then with the six thirty.
Yeah, kind of an update.
Thank you.
We like to say there's three a couple of three key point points that we update. We update, you you know, right after we close the year like now. We we update then when any significant information comes due, especially the six thirty. And then that's kind of the budget process. And then, you know, once you finally adopt a budget. And it's pretty easy to update that. The most major thing is working in the twenty-four budget, once you get it, it takes a little time to do that.
Thank you. And I do have another question, but I'm gonna let somebody else. No, 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 I.
Well, this is. Witnesses prepared for cross-examination.
Well, this is a recommendation that that I made. Well, recommendation number two, review future cumulative bridge expenses and reduce property tax levy if possible and move to general fund. I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about that one.
Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, so so really important point is max levy, okay? Your maximum levy takes into account your general fund, your health fund, your, and I didn't bring your seventeen eighty-two or I could gone through all of them.
Election aviation reassess.
Yeah, yeah. And if you noticed on aviation, if you looked in here, we migrated about two hundred thousand dollars of that levy back to and proportionate to the other funds. Now, if you look at aviation, there's a little bit of um, you might want to be careful with that.
It goes negative in twenty twenty.
Yes, because it might have to come back. And so migrating your levy between those controlled funds of which bridge is a controlled fund, Cume Bridge, not Major Bridge, Major Bridge's outside, remember, kind of, we brought that and adopted that many, many years ago. And so strategically making sure, and I'm, I know Lisa does a very good job because we spent with, you know, I was just down here last month with redevelopment commission, going through all of her capital improvements, but making sure that that's not bringing in too much for the overall ten-year bridge plan. Okay, and so that's really important. And having that communication and having it match up there, it is, does appear to be strong. It doesn't appear to be too strong, that would not be my call. That would be really Lisa's call and the council's call with some discussion. Okay, and that's what we meant by that, because it may get important to your aviation fund to migrate some back. It looks like it could start getting important to the general fund as time goes on.
Discussing that particular fund, uh, I know there was legislation, I I believe it went through uh having to do with allowing us to do more in-house work rather than having to to contract it out. There was like, we've always been able to do a certain amount, and that's, and we were trying to cover that out of that uh Cume Bridge Fund, um, trying to do as much of the work as we could ourselves with, and we had staff in there, some of our drivers and so forth. So but I've always looked at it as it is a part, you may as well just say, put that together with the general fund, and then could either of those funds put together, give money, any additional money over to the other funds and reduce the general fund by that much if we had to. But we certainly don't want to be in a situation of some counties and just really let their bridges fall apart and the roads fall apart.
Exactly.
And and you know, as much as I hate new taxes, I was out there making sure that the Major Bridge Fund happened. Because if we hadn't, if we didn't have that Major Bridge Fund, which is not the same thing as this Cume Bridge, because that's setting in that frozen levy. But the Major Bridge is a rate controlled and it's not in a part of the frozen levy, although it is in the one percent, two percent cap, three percent cap. But it's not a part of our frozen levy. So, you know, I'm, I work with the highway and I'm always trying to make sure that we leave enough money there because we do an excellent job with our roads and our bridges. I mean, beyond what many, many counties can do. But one of the last uh.
So again, if I may.
Ah, yes.
Again, I'm just suggesting that you sit down with your ten-year bridge plan and you write size.
Right, right, and and I absolutely appreciate you saying that. Uh, I remember at one of your last seminars, one of your statements you made was what everybody was going to have to look for and watch out for was the salaries for the jailers and the salaries for our road drivers. And I've said that over and over since I heard you say that, I keep reminding everybody. We have to look at those because those are the ones that that, and we have really worked at that. I mean, we are working at that, though I'm not sure where we need to be with the drivers. But um, it's so important for anybody who's going to have the time, the ability to try to make sure you're you're teaching budget uh uh.
One oh one.
One oh one for AIC.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's just in another week or so, right?
I'm doing the May eighteenth and seventeenth and eighteenth.
Right. And so.
The two.
Just as soon as you think you know everything, you go and listen to him, you'll find out that you don't. There's always something new to learn.
Thank you. And one in one example, Marty, on the jailers. And I I this is a real live example, one county didn't increase theirs. So the only thing they were getting is applicants that were eighteen years old.
Right.
Put eighteen-year-old in your jail, see what happens.
We we know that, we know.
Okay.
Are you trying to rub it in?
So all I'm seeing is, let's be careful, I, there's judgment bonds in Lake County for a reason.
Well, I'm I'm just saying, I think that you brought brought that to our attention. And I just have repeated what you've told us in that training session over and over again. And so your words have been heard right here in this room many times. Oh, and the other thing I saw, I can't remember what page it was on because I studied this when I first started, and it's been a while. Where you saw a revenue going down and and you tagged on there that you were, it was assuming uh that that annexation would go through. So was that in the public safety lit fund, is that which fund?
Yeah, I think it was several of them.
Well, it certainly would be the food and beverage for sure, that.
Yeah.
It.
Boy, and you brought back, you brought back the three meetings that I spent, what, five hours here, supporting that food and beverage tax, when you mentioned it, I was like, yeah, it was right here. And and.
And then what did I say, remember when you were right here and I said, I think we ought to put a something on it because this could go on and on, and why they don't do something, it's like, oh, well, we don't need that.
Right, but it's an it's an awesome possibility coming.
However, if we had put something on there, let people know they better get busy and get it done instead of dragging it on so long.
So we talked to Jeff, and it's my understanding the annexations are still in court to a certain degree. So it would be impacting most likely all of the funds that receive income taxes. So that's why we put the note on several of the funds.
And you've got that in your revenue assumptions, you see the big drop in twenty twenty-five.
Yep, because that's what we knew as of so far as the time of the report. So stay tuned.
Because we're going to see that huge drop when we start getting that extra income tax, and then we're going to see.
It go down.
A drop when I get the more the population count and so.
Yeah, there's a lot of ups and downs on this. Come on. So that's why it's critical to look beyond one year, please.
If you learn nothing else, uh, Counselor Iverson.
Well, thanks again for coming back. Sure, appreciate you being here. And you know, I I really appreciate the recommendations that you give in terms of lit and the pressures that everyone's feeling on, you know, labor costs. But one of the things that uh I think uh where we're at right now is we're also looking at increased capital costs as you know, we have, you know, a new jail that we need to be be building. Um, you know, and how would you, how are you, I mean, I don't imagine those are built into your assumptions in in this report right now. But I imagine that those will be built into assumptions in the future in terms of if we're going to be uh, you know, building a jail versus if we're going to be building treatment and increase labor costs on those or increase, you know, in in different areas like that. And I kind of want to hear your thoughts on what we're looking toward.
So so that's, you're right, we have not gone too far out on that limb at this point in time. But I can tell you, in the last several months, I've I've built the biggest jails, which is uh both Hancock County and uh Hendricks County. And there's the the ways of funding them, especially with the dedicated jail tax, was awesome. We actually wrote that legislation for Hancock County, Bob Cherry carried it. And it's called the correctional facility tax. Now, here we've been talking about utilizing it and and things like that, but bringing on the the impact of, yeah, you know, they say the new design will save, and I keep hearing the new designs not saving employee cost and things like that. So it's very, very important. I can also tell you, in in, first of all, in Hancock County, we've started a state-of-the-art program for rehabilitation and bringing people through the justice. We have a justice navigator system now. And uh, I just got off the phone this morning with uh Hamilton or Hancock County Regional. They're actually going up to to Allen County to talk about, they want to hear about what they're doing, what we're doing in Hancock County. Might be something, we've started this program with ARPA funds, I just wrote up the internal controls for it. It's a five-million-dollar program that we're introducing over year, year and two years to be able to get the rehabilitation, get the navigation, get what we talked about this morning. When you get out of jail, you and I probably wouldn't know this. But when you and I, if we were in jail and in there for a lot of times, it's basic things like underwear and jeans are kind of important. And you know, that's those things you wouldn't think about. But those are programs that we're trying, they're even getting down to how do they get you out the door in a more meaningful way, assuming you want to get them. And you know, putting those tools in your toolbox. And so the the, you know, we're using ARPA money in Hancock County to establish that program, and then we'd love to go for long-term funding program from the state of Indiana. And they're from, they're aware of that. But keeping them people locked up is not the goal.
That's right. That's right.
So that's helpful. You've got a lot of things that are going to develop as we go down this track and kind of important. And you know, a lot of considerations, we've got a lot of experience to help you.
Excellent, excellent, that's good to hear, and it's good to hear what's happening in other communities as well. Thank you.
Sure.
Did I hear you recommending we should be in conversation with Hancock County?
Well, I there's, I couldn't put you in or someone that's really good here. I can put you in contact with someone with uh Hancock County Regional Hospital that is actually putting together the program, assuming she's very busy with developing this own program, but I'm suggesting that might be somebody to even you talk and you might say, wow, no, we're doing something different, that's fine. You know, I I believe in collaborating, putting people together. And sorry, that's not coming out good tonight. Cooper cooperating with other entities or seeing what other people are doing. I was real impressed when she said she was going up to Allen County because the, you know, that's the second biggest uh city that has the now a huge jail that they're in the process of doing, so. So if you give me a, I can, I can make sure they they have the time and it's worth a look. The worst thing you can do is say, wow, no, that's not it, that's not it.
Of course, our job is to look at the money. And so I, we have to be laser focused on how are we going to finance it? And what is it going to cost the average citizen out there to help us pay for it?
And Marty, that's where I'm thinking as as something like this is put together in in different geographic locations, that then the focus point up to getting some long-term funding, it's going to be very, very tough on the taxpayers' back to do it without some type of additional funding. And so I'm thinking by having three legs of the stool or more legs of the stool, focusing. Focusing up to a point might get some more help from someone else, if you know who I mean. So just things to consider.
Very interesting. Thank you. Getting all kinds of information out of this one.
Well, I told Marty, you you know, always use me because, believe me, I I've done this for a while. And I also do it in a lot of different places. And there's a lot of good things going on, but a lot of things you got to be very, very careful.
Well, well, okay. So in in just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just you talk about using you. Do do you want us to funnel all questions through Jeff Cockrell? Is that the the way you?
That's probably the helpful focus point because I've tried, you know, I I do that in other counties. I don't do that in other counties. And and we're quite frankly, we're getting a call a day. And that's not efficient. And then it gets disseminated to everybody.
I was gonna say, why, why would you not utilize Molly since she is our council legal?
As always, that's the only reason why I made that assumption. I that's fine if Molly wants to be the focus.
Yeah, that's up to you. But one focal point is what I was kind of saying, you know, if if we can help, we're here to help.
Thank you. Okay, other question on the side, I'm beating the microphone. No?
You ought to try back there on the preacher's bench.
Yeah, that's rough. Okay, well, if there aren't any other questions.
So is there anything I can do? I know there's some discussion on number eleven. And I thought about hanging around for number eleven. And but I don't know how much discussion will be on number eleven, but it is kind of intertwined with number ten.
Yes, it is. Actually, just hang out if you don't mind. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get really into it. It's mostly a presentation, but if I'd I'd welcome your comment.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
I don't know if somebody's joined.
All right, I have, I have to kind of announce this, don't I? We're now moving to agenda item number ten, which is from our. From our council office. See, you get past like that two hour mark and I am useless. Oh, my goodness. Uh, so Michelle, you are going to enlighten us with some great information.
This is, it's just a history of what council has done with regards to COLA. I was able to go back to at least.
My eyes aren't what they used to be. Thank you, Michelle.
That is okay. This, I was able to go back to two thousand and nine. So to get like a history of what we've done with regards to COLA. So. And that this is also included in the packet for your information, and I think I sent it out. But this, the bottom part here explains what we have done for twenty twenty two as well as twenty twenty three. So in twenty twenty two. We. Did an increase of the union merit deputies and correctional staff back effective to October twenty third, twenty third. Which was a fifteen percent increase. And then for twenty twenty three, you did a five percent. For Monroe County employees and then an additional one point six seven percent for probation officers to bring them up to the five percent as well. So that's the history for the last couple of years. And so we normally use the. Consumer Price Index as a guideline for our percentages with regards to. What kind of a COLA you want to see. So last, we always use the December as the the prior year. So for twenty twenty two, it was seven point five and you decided with a five percent. So for twenty twenty four, we go with the twenty twenty two amount. And it's currently at six percent for the for the December amount. So that's all I was really going to kind of give you is. This is the numbers that you're kind of looking at. This is what we did for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So. And that's all I have. I was just, I wanted to get this on your radar because we're gonna, you know, I'm already gearing up trying to get things ready for budgets. And starting to get forms, you know, ready to be out to the department. So.
If I may, one important point in about eleven fifty nine on Saturday night. What happens to the growth quotient? If the growth quotient, you know, we're predicting five percent. We put that already in here. I said four years, three or four years ago, when the growth quotient gets to be X, what's for somebody to come after it? Well, guess what? And so if eleven fifty nine, they decide the growth quotient is three percent. Cat. Houston, you might have a difficulty.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's great information. Eleven fifty nine on Saturday night and the damage control after that is going to be so important. Because your property taxes might not be able to consume certain things.
A bit dire. Hi.
Just a quick comment, which I'm sure is completely unnecessary, but I just wanted to remind the council that as discussed. Last year when we were discussing COLA, the flat will kind of put us in a terrible position. As far as our WIS study and so forth, it will make everything kind of unlevel and it won't be staggered. Like the increase will not be as it should necessarily.
Tell me more about that. I don't quite understand it.
So if we're giving like the same amount to to all, it's not like. The increase as it should be, like we're not doing an up percent to each position and we'll get behind the COLA. But as far as like right now, we did five percent last year, right? So the, what was it? Seven and a half percent was the actual. COLA increase. So we're behind two and a half percent now. You know, not staying with the COLA is one thing and the the percent increase is different for each position. Depending on salary level.
Right.
So if we're doing a dollar per position, I mean, that's good for some, not so good for others, for example.
Councilman.
So what Ms. Gregory relayed is exactly why some years we would give a percentage increase. And other years we would give a flat rate increase in order to keep the basic. Compensation schedule continuing, you know, year to year without great changes. Because you don't want to always reward those with the the highest salary by giving them the biggest increases.
Yeah. But you're saying that that it would be best to not do flat. In general.
That's my opinion, and that's what was discussed last year. I feel it would be more fair just to give the increase that everyone should receive based on COLA. And I think that's as we spoke with the auditor, that was her opinion as well. So I just wanted to relay that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You looked at me like you had something.
I I feel like I always have something to say, but whether I should say it or not. All right. So one of the the things that is is really interesting about what Mr. Gata said, what about, you know, this Friday evening? Is we are also at the same time hearing from almost every single department that they cannot attract and retain staff. And I know that COLA is not the silver bullet and I know it's not a panacea. But we are, our department heads are really under the gun here. And so that's a consideration. I think that I I want to keep in mind too.
And and that's, I guess that's, I don't disagree with that, but I'm sitting here looking at the numbers here. It looks like in your your assumptions, you used three percent as a payroll escalator, right?
That is correct.
And so that, and even at that, we're still hemorrhaging in the general fund by several million dollars.
Now, one thing I will say is we did keep in, you'll notice the line on retention bonuses. We kept that moving into the future. So that's a pretty important point. I don't know, I didn't have the time to add all those dollars up. But that could be a potential other pool. I don't know, or was it here when you decided to do that? And how you wanted to do that in the future.
Right. I don't know that we have.
Pretty critical.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's actually in each of the departmental budgets.
Yes, sir. Going forward in twenty four and twenty five and twenty six. Because again, I don't know if that was deliberated.
Okay, right.
And you basically escalated that at the same assumptions that you escalated the rest of the payroll, three, two and two.
Correct.
Okay.
Because let's face it, I know exactly what Peter, you you said. I know. That's why I keep saying twenty twenty four is going to be the toughest budget. Because the demand on wages, but yet the resources might be restricted.
Yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm curious why you, why you said that. Why is twenty twenty four going to be the toughest one?
Because you may have that perfect storm where, and I articulated to this to DLGF today. I said, you know, on some of the counties and some of the cities, we're we're doing a pay matrix and we're trying to. Increase gradually the impact of the wages. We know they're low back here. We know we need to get up here. But because of, you know, basically the tax, the the reserve margins couldn't take us. Going from here to here in one year, that the gradualism concept is in play. Then you take and cut off the gate, the ball game from us. That we all thought thought was going to happen, which was a common growth quotient with non farm rolling twelve, you know, rolling sixty months. Now you've entered, interjected something in the path, the glide path. So we we were trying to go up in a lot of places gradually. And gradualism was even by department some places and things like that. Now you pull the rug out from under us on the revenue producer, that's going to get, that could get really tough. And that that line down there called cash reserve could change significantly.
So it's really the growth quotient issue.
That's going to be number one.
Which we'll hear about shortly.
Pardon me?
Which we will hear about shortly.
We're hoping. I hope it's, it's not a non farm payroll rolling eighty months. And then we have to go all back and figure it. So.
Wow, go ahead.
So I'm I'm wondering if, how can I say this? We know that that. Well, I think a lot of us think that the inflation will not last forever. I mean, it's already, if you look at the Midwest CPI, it's already trending down. Would it be wise to potentially use some of the ARPA funds as revenue replacement to kind of get us over the hump?
It it's a possibility, but it does have an end date. Okay? And so that's the problem is the sustain, we've had people trying that and the sustainability is the issue. Okay, and you've got so many things playing into your, so so yes, but no. Jeff, I'm not trying to weasel around it, but it's it's a tough one. That's a tough one.
I'm just saying, you know, the last December was seven point five Midwest CPI, this year six. Next year maybe maybe six. It's certainly not going to be six two years from now.
Yeah, and we had some people, remember, you're gonna, you're, I'm assuming you're taking the ten million dollar exception. So that the ten million dollar exception is 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 opened up. And we've had, we've had a city charged to that ten million dollar exception for an entire six month period. Let the general fund grow so that they then have a way to manipulate or to work through the difficulties. That occur in the future.
But we haven't haven't consumed that ten million dollars by a long shot. Do do, do you remember how much out of the? Lost revenue category we've actually spent?
Good to call it lost revenue.
I don't think we've obligated anything yet in that category.
So there may still be a lot of money on the table.
Yeah, and keep in mind, the lost revenue in in the statute in that eighty eight hundred and sixty three pages. That was the concept that was in the interim rule. And the final rule has more of a revenue, more of a ten million dollar, you know. Window, let's put it that way.
Yeah, well, we are not using that. We have not jumped through that window.
I don't think you have, we have not assisted in the application of or in in the in the upload of your documents. So but that's something to be aware of.
Councilor Deckard.
You may not be able to, thank you, by the way, for everything. You may not be able to answer this, but I want to draw upon your wisdom a little bit. Did you see counties last year, whereas we did some things around retention and COLA? Did you see counties that didn't do anything or didn't do much? And are those counties in a tougher spot?
So yes, and yes.
Okay.
You know, they, Martin County would have loved to do it. Martin County is fifty percent tax exempt. They don't have the wherewithal. They got a million dollar head handed to them that they had to start. The the EMS pulled out from Knox County. They got a million dollar EMS problem that came to them in one full swoop. So yes, the that was very, very tough. Some some counties were able to do it. That was my point with the five percent growth quotient. So they started stepping up because they were outdated ten percent on their on their wages. So they were striving to make it up over a period of years, but might have a difficulty, further difficulty.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm wondering, given the fruitfulness of this discussion, if we want to also have a discussion at our next meeting. Once we know more. Or maybe not next, but I mean, we can, but in a in a future meeting, it would be interesting to know more.
After the six thirty number, sounds like maybe it might be a.
It would give us a better idea of where we stand and.
So July work session?
Well, and does the, does the county auditor, do you, do you guys put out? A a percent to use in your one forty fours to the department heads? Yeah, do you tell them what to use in their in one forty fours? Okay, so so then you wouldn't need it by then.
What we've done in the past is just tell them to budget flat. So whatever we have for this year, they budget.
Gotcha.
Same.
Okay. And one forty four, if you explain, that's just the payroll document that comes from the department heads. Yeah.
We could always tell them something, but I. We've always posed it as a question, like we want to tell them flat.
It's just always hard to do the budget before you do the budget.
Right.
That's that's my problem with the whole one forty four systems.
Yeah.
You know, how you come up with that number unless you see the big picture.
Right, because we have, we have COLA committees in sometimes in in some counties. And the COLA committees are coming out with six or seven percent, like you did. And they say, Greg, and I'm like.
We, I don't think we'll do that.
Well, right, our, our commissioners tried to, you know, tried to tell us nine percent last year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's helpful.
There were, Houston, there may be a difficult.
We, I, I, with council guidance, we've just always had them do flat and then that way we kind of have an idea. And then we're not actually selecting a COLA or anything until we, you know, know exactly what the absolute numbers are going to be. So and then we make last minute changes.
And here's what we're also doing in some counties is is developing a a payroll spreadsheet. So that, you know, we can know the, do you already have that? And and by by department or by fund? And so, yeah. And so, yeah. And so that's very helpful to be able to you know, because I can use the final results of what you come up with, but change, you know, changing in, in each and every uh, sustainability would be, but so great if you've got that, that's very helpful. So my opinion, you should be talking about the budget every, every meeting, but I'm a budget guy. Or at least thinking about part.
And lots of thinking, lots of thinking. Other questions?
If not, I'll quit taking up your time and.
No.
This has been amazing.
Really helpful, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we do hope that you'll consider coming back in July.
Yeah. You know, yeah, or whatever we need and, and you know, just, uh,
We can just put a permanent.
On Jack Molly or Jeff. I, sorry, Molly, I didn't bring the meaning of blessing you. But, but thank you very much. And oh.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
A little bit.
I've got 14 minutes left on my parking meter by the way.
I know, I do too. It's kind of funny. Um, we are at number 12 then, I believe, unless there are concerns for him on the COLA. Him on the COLA. All right, let's move to number 12.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of September 15, 2022. The budget work session number five and March 28, 2023, work session as presented.
Second.
Are there any changes or questions or, all right? Any public comment on our, um, minutes? All right. Don't see any, uh, at all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who say nay? And passes and council comments? Are there any council comments? Yes.
Uh, I just have to say this, this Friday night, at least I'm sleeping out for Beacon. Uh, that's, that's going to be, uh, seven to eight PM on Saturday, uh, Friday, April 28th. Um, I'm going to be there with my daughter and we're going to have a lot of fun. And I, I just want to point out that I have raised more money than Trent Deckard. And I don't think he can catch up.
Ooh.
I also by May, join my colleague, I'll also be sleeping out.
The contest is on.
Counselor Iverson.
Oh. All right, all right, we'll see. Okay. But it, but it's for a good cause. It's for people experiencing homelessness. This is a, a really welcoming shelter. Uh, it's the only secular LGBTQ plus affirming year-round emergency shelter for homeless adults in the region. So it's a great cause.
Thank you for reminding us about that. Uh, any other comment? Yes.
I was just going to say, um, that I am very thankful for the leadership of the county council. Um, and trying to do better when it comes to public engagement. Um, and the thought of us doing the Community Justice Fiscal Response Committee. Uh, that's a lot of words there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't even know how I would say that. I'm just going to have to name it all out, but I do think that it's very important. Um, I do think that community has, we've all received so many different types of emails over the past weekend. All the way up until the time that we started this meeting.
Yeah.
And we've heard from a, a lot of people, whether it is via email, whether it is out and about during little bug weekend. I did not participate, but just was out and about. Um, and was saying, and it, it's just, I'm, I'm very thankful and grateful for the community conversations that hopefully will continue as we all have been asking for, um, input from various groups or organizations and voices that are need, that are needed at the table, but somehow have not been a chance to be a part of that. So I just wanted to say that I'm very thankful for that and looking forward to May 9th.
Thanks, Council Muntzen.
I just want to follow this up by thanking, uh, Counselor Iverson for his initial drafting. And to all my colleagues for the work I know that they will put into looking at, at this document. And I'm so grateful to be able to tell the many people who I know are paying attention to us and are anxious to hear about what we are going to do, that they will be able to see next Friday afternoon, uh, a document that they will be able to review and, uh, and, and respond to.
Yep.
So thank you, all of you.
Thanks, Council Deckard.
I, I did want to add on to that to say that, um, in local government, in every level of government, but local government particularly, we have an absolute obligation to get things done uh, for the people that we serve and represent all of those people. And we must, no matter what the obstacle, we have to get those things done and we have to do them efficiently and well. And well is a hard thing to get. Uh, but it has to be done. There's no choice. And I think about all the issues that we're facing in this community. And I hear constantly from, from people who are frustrated by things that have been simmering and not getting done, and they must be done and done well. And so I'm, I'm grateful for this draft. I'm grateful for the leadership, our members on that committee who have been beating that drum and I look forward to that as well.
Thank you. And I believe that's all for council comment. Um, so this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. We even, anything else to sign?
I mean, it just needs to be said. And I gave you one other thing to say. You did.